Time now being six o'clock this time, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the October meeting of the Dawson County Planning Commission. We will begin with invocation. Mr. Neil Horns, if you would please, Neil.
Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful county we live in, and I pray that you can just guide us to make the right decisions on these cases. We're here tonight in Jesus's name, amen.
Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. At this time, we will have our roll call. And the record will show that we have four present. Mr. Steve Sandvile is not present tonight, but we do have a quorum, so we will continue with our meeting. Under announcements, the Grizzle Road variance, the variance that was for Grizzle Road has been withdrawn. So if you're here to speak on it, there's no need because it won't be heard tonight. It has been withdrawn. The minutes that have been presented by staff from September 16th, I assume you've had opportunity to look at those. Is there any amendments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moving a second, all in favor. And the motion is carried for zero. The agenda that's presented by staff tonight, I assume you've had opportunity to look over it. Is there any changes? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving a second to approve, all in favor. And the motion is carried for zero as well. If you're here tonight, speak either in favor or in opposition of any application, and you have given more, made a contribution of more than $250 to any local official campaign. There's a form that needs to be filled out, and Richard has it at the desk here before you. Under new business, Chairman Jason Hamby and Vice Chairman Neil Horns, you have confirmed their intention to continue serving in their respective leadership roles for the 2026 term. If you gentlemen are willing to accept that, then we'll need a motion as to such. If you want to change that, then we'll need a motion as to such.
Most to approve.
Second.
Moving a second to approve, all in favor. Again, motion is carried for zero. The Dawson County Planning Commission proposed meeting calendar has been posted online. It is the third Tuesday of every month, just as it has been for many years. Is there a motion to accept that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving a second, all in favor. And the motion is carried for zero. We'll begin with application for variance VA 25-15. Kareem Hawthorne has filed an application with appropriate authorities seeking relief from requirements of the Dawson County Land Development Code, Article 3, Chapter 121, 72, 6C. Applicant is requesting a corrective variance to reclassify an existing accessory structure, which is a pool house, originally permitted as an accessory use to be recognized as a residential dwelling. Is someone here to speak for Kareem Hawthorne? If so, would you please come forward? Write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. For the record, please state your name. If you would, please give us a reason for your request of variance.
Sure. So we originally submitted plans for the construction of our home in 2019, which consisted of what is our pool home and our main home. And at that time, we submitted it as two structures. We originally had two different addresses at that, at that time we purchased, and we combined two different addresses into one address, which is now 494. And in doing so, we combined a lot. So it was always our intention when we submit our building plans and went through the process to have our pool house residence and our main residence, which we would both be able to use as, you know, a dwelling is what is now being told, that it wasn't originally classified as a residential dwelling. And it's not a typical accessory structure. It's a 3,000 square foot, two-bedroom, four-bathroom, three-car garage home. It's a standalone home on its own. It's not a shed or something that's been classified as something else. It's actually a full-on home. So according to our HOA rules, there's no objection directly in from the HOA that this cannot exist. And it was only brought to our attention maybe a few months ago that this was something that's not, I guess, within the, the code here, the RPC community typically. So we have no intentions of having another family or hosting another family, or there's no, no expansion. So it's not going to be an increase of traffic or load on the neighborhood, the county, or the community at whole. And we were just simply applying for the variance so that that can be recognized as a dwelling. And currently, the use for that would be to house our in-laws. Instead of living in the main home with us, they would simply live next door in what we call the pool house.
Where do your in-laws currently reside?
They live with us.
They live with you?
At our main home, yeah.
And the zoning of this property is RPC, is that correct?
Correct.
And RPC does specifically say that it does not allow two residences in one lot. Is that correct?
Now, that's something that's been brought to our attention, correct.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant?
Yeah, so the HO, or the POA is saying that, that the secondary residence is not allowed for the covenants?
No, that hasn't, that's not something that was told to us by our POA. That's something that we was made aware of through the county.
Okay, cool. Well, they've, they've sent a letter saying that, that it's not allowed.
Yeah, we, we've never received a letter from our POA at all stating anything of that nature. We only got this notice directly when we were meeting here after we got a citation for it, and we came to figure out what that citation was for. And again, I, I think the confusion on our, that came up on our side is that we submitted the plans in 2019, and it was approved to be built as such. It's laid out as bedroom one, bedroom two. So we had no idea that, that we would not be able to have someone sleep in that bedroom one, bedroom two, park their car in three-car garage. That was never something that was told. And, you know, the RPC was not something that was, we were aware of at the time, and no one at the county at the time of our application also made that aware. Again, it was approved, so.
And they, they do say that it could, if you, if you split it back into two lots, you could potentially get it approved by the, by the POA. I don't know if you heard that, but.
No, again, we had no communication from the POA in favor or against it whatsoever. We only know that it was an issue once we had the citation from the county. So we were never given any notice from our POA at all about the, the pool house structure.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other questions? Has a pool house been in construction for six years?
No, so we started construction, we got a home fire in 2019. We started construction top of 2020. We built through COVID, and we've been living in, on the property for the last over three years. And this was only brought up to us maybe, I don't know, probably in March or April or, I don't remember when exactly we received the citation, so this is something that just came up.
So the, there's currently people living in the pool house?
Our in-laws.
Okay, gotcha.
Does, does our approval of this put in violation of the, of the HOA?
No, I mean, my understanding from my research is that the, whatever stricter would apply, so I think it would still be, need approval from the, the HOA, but I'm not a lawyer, so I don't.
So essentially, as Dawson County Planning Commission members appointed by the elected folks, the elected folks, we know, adopt the county regulations, the county code. As staff, we enforce it, and as planning commission, y'all review proposals, and you're reviewing based on the county code. So separately, there may or may not be active enforced covenants if somebody lives in a neighborhood where the county says you can have trash cans, you can put them out wherever you want, and, you know, trash just needs to get picked up. You can't let trash, you know, mound up forever. But, you know, you can put your trash can wherever. But if a private covenant that's enforced says your trash cans cannot stay at the front of your house all the time, it's got to be tucked away somewhere where people can't see it, except on trash day, then that's up to the private side to enforce that private covenant. Same thing here. The county is, is neither, you know, is neutral. We just don't enforce the private covenant. But on the county side, the RPC zoning district does not allow for an accessory dwelling unit, a guest house, a pool house. Unfortunately, as Mr. Hawthorne mentioned, in 2020, the then-staff and, you know, we, none of them are with the department today, but the then-staff reviewed the application because to Hawthorne's credit, they submitted the permit application with permit documents, but it was incorrectly permitted as a pool house. It should have just been noted as an accessory building, not a residence. That's part of the confusion where we are now. And just a couple more details, the pool house is not finalized. It has not had the full mechanical, electrical plumbing inspection passed. It has not had a final inspection passed. It does not have a certificate of occupancy. So that, you know, that's something else that we've got in terms of our citations, and we're working with the Hawthorne family separately. On November 5th, they do have a magistrate court date. So regardless of if this gets approved or denied, there's still magistrate court.
From a legal side, can this board vary to use? Meaning can we claim, or can we say, although the regulations say this cannot be, then we're given a variance toward it can be? Can we vary to use legally?
That's a challenging situation, and if you want to err on the side of caution, then you would be well within a reasoned argument to deny this variance based on concerns about use of property where it's not allowed.
Historically, we've been told through legal, we cannot vary to use. So that's just what I wanted to broach with you. Any other questions, the applicant?
And just to note too, that whatever decision we make tonight can be appealed to the Board of Commissioners. Correct.
Correct. That's, that's correct.
But in the beginning?
Yeah.
The permit was given with bedrooms?
So the permit in, in May 2020, yes, the same month, there was a permit for the house and a permit for the pool house. And yes, it included house plans with bedrooms, yes.
On the pool house?
Yes.
How did this, how did the citation come to, come to be?
So it's, it's a combination of use and not being fully finalized. If somebody's living in the accessory structure, they should not be because of zoning, and they should not be because it hasn't had the mechanical, electrical plumbing inspection pass. It has not had the final inspection. It doesn't have a CO.
And I don't know if I can.
Sure.
So just to thank you, Richard, for answering all the questions. So and part of that is the pool house for the in-laws is, it's not used continuously. So if, if someone's out of town and they're coming back in, so the, the items that, we do need to get the final inspection done, and it's something that's on our calendar to do. We've also been traveling, been out of town for several months. That is something we're looking to do before November 5th. And what that'll entail is literally having the inspector come back out. We had inspection come out, and I think we were missing, you know, when your breakers have to pop and they all go out at the same time. So we had a receptacle that needed to be replaced, and that's one of the things we need to do to finalize our MEP inspection. So that, that's part of it. And like you mentioned, we did have that original classification and permit that we paid for, and that we were told this is fine. And we have had, I think, Tom, Jerry, and all the inspectors that work with Dawson County at that property, and they've all been through there. And it's, it's, like I said, it's year five, and three months ago, we found out about this. So of course, our in-laws are, all their goods and items are in there, their elderly, and it's just their private and peace is their home that we built for them. And we, we would like to be able to use it for that. Again, we're not looking to move a new family in or other people in, or, you know, it's not going to encroach on the neighborhood at all. It would actually be how it's been for the last five years, and there's been no issue. So I don't know if there's any other questions.
I guess I have one more question. What's the court date? What is that to determine?
The court date, Wednesday, November 5th at 9:00 AM. There were initially two citations, one for the pool, one for the pool house. The pool was dropped because we're working with the Hawthorne family on getting that finalized out. They still need to have a final inspection that gets passed on the pool, but they're working through that, and so we wanted to work with them on that. So that was dropped, but the citation about the pool house remains, and it's a matter of, you know, is it up to code from a residential code standpoint and the, the use? So some of these same things will be brought up in magistrate court about the, the use. And then, you know, it, what happens here will be noted in magistrate court. You know, if it, if it gets denied here, then as was mentioned and has been noted to applicant before this year by the county staff, it's all, it's already per the 1998 subdivision plat, if I remember right, 13 and 14. So it's lots 13 and 14, and it could pretty straightforward, you know, be surveyed again and show a correct line and not go through a building. Now, it, it might go through or near the pool, but there's probably a way to jog it even with that. I understand the Hawthorns' Plan A is not to cut through the middle of their property since it's a driveway that serves both structures, and so an artificial property line down the middle would, would be different. However, that, that is a Plan B option that would result in a single-family residence on each lot that would be the primary residence for each property.
Yeah, you could just use an easement for the driveway. I mean, I think that regardless of what we do, you, you still have to deal with the HOA.
Yeah, and all right, like I said, I never had any notice or indication at all from my HOA to date. I know since the county puts the sign up for the hearing, we've had neighbors ask what, what's going on, but we haven't had a letter from our HOA, POA saying anything. And we, we did discuss the option of splitting it down the middle, and it seems very easy, like, oh, you can solve the problem. However, it's not necessarily that easy because it's structured in a certain way, and, you know, future use or in 10, 15 years, you want to sell, is no way to sell one without the other, or, you know, it's just too many different mechanics to figure out. And additionally, it'll be an additional, I don't know, $3,500 HOA, POA fee that you have to pay per lot, per structure. So obviously, that's not something that you would just sign up for automatically as well.
So the plans that were submitted to the Architectural Review Committee, did they show the, the bedrooms in the pool house?
Yes, sir. The plans, and I don't know if we have a copy to display, but the plans literally are bedroom one, primary bedroom, bedroom number two, three-car garage, has kitchen, washer and dryer. It's, it's, it's a full home. It's a 3,100 square foot structure. It's not a shed, it's a, it's completely brick. It's, you know, it's a full-on home.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Okay. Is that all?
Yeah, I've got to ask everyone else if they have.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time, we'll close at the board for discussion.
I have one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Our decision here, one way or the other, it is, obviously, they'll use our decision for the court case, but what if we decided to table to determine what let the court case play out and then go from there? In other words, do you need our decision for the court case, or does he need our decision for the court case?
We do, if possible, please. The citation has been continued. This was going to be on the September Planning Commission meeting agenda, but everything was not in, in time, and so that's why it's on the October agenda. So magistrate court date has been pushed back a couple of times with the thought that because it's structure that's under the county code related to community development activities, planning and development, building permitting inspections, that the decision in this case of Planning Commission is relevant and is appreciated before the magistrate court meets.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I mean, based on the fact that the plans were, you know, approved with bedrooms, kitchen, all that, submitted to the Architectural Review Committee, I don't see how we can now go back and say, you can't, you can't use it. I do think, you know, the applicant needs to work it out with the HOA, but.
However, we would be varying to use, which means that we are saying it's okay to put something that is specifically told we can't do.
Because the county specifically said he could.
Yeah, that's not our, that wasn't our.
I mean, I.
We didn't make that decision, that wasn't.
Right, but he has a permit and he builds it.
It really puts this board into a pickle.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think that, you know, ultimately, it probably needs to go to the Board of Commissioners, but that, you know, that's determined by if somebody appeals it or not, but.
That's something that the Planning Commission, because we do occasionally have variances that are significant enough that go to the Board of Commissioners. It's not typical. It's usually a package deal, like for example, Crestwind. The Crestwind development that's going to be on 53, and then eventually is going to have access on Frank Bruce Road many years from now. That was a package of rezoning and variances, so it was ultimately decided as a whole by Board of Commissioners, but y'all did review and make a recommendation on that. It's, I don't know, you know, Mr. Hamby and some of y'all that have been on the, the Planning Commission for years, I would defer to y'all on if that's ever occurred. You know, I, I can understand both ways of thinking, but I'm sure, you know, one might question, is it kicking the can down the road if, you know, this is a, is a little more smaller level, individual, less than an acre lot, house variance? I don't know if it would be, you know, the most appropriate course of action. I just don't know if it's, if it's been done before.
It has not been done before, not just in my term, anyway.
Well, okay, here's the thing. If we motioned, if we do deny it, Mr. Hawthorne, he can appeal it to the Board of Commissioners. And keep the process moving if, if he wants. And, and there is the option to split it into two lots. So there is, there is another option.
I don't know, can I speak again, make them comment?
Come back to podium.
Again, I don't, I don't know if this was shown, if they've been able to see the actual structure. I think it might help you guys, and can I show you what that looks like?
Yeah, it was on, you have that on the screen, you can show again.
Like the actual building itself and the lot and why it's.
It will not change the dilemma that we're facing.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I, I, I do think, you know, to your point, we obviously could appeal and move forward, and, you know, ideally, we do have a permit that was given by someone that worked at the county, whether they're here today or not. We built based on that. If we were to not be able to use this structure, it's several hundred thousand dollars and a permit fee.
That's not what this board is looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
But at the same time, we are guided by a certain set of guidelines as well. There's certain things that we can do and that we can't do. You split, you had two pieces, and you put them together.
We did.
When they were put together, that created one lot.
Correct.
By creating one lot, then it says in our RPC guidelines that we're not allowed in RPC to have two different structures, two different dwelling structures. So by putting them together, you've created a situation that, from my standpoint, this board is going to have a difficult time giving you a variance for because RPC strictly says you cannot do that. So that's, that's what puts the dilemma.
Does RPC fall? Does RPC fall under the permitting group?
It is a zoning classification.
So they would know what the RPC rules are at the time of permitting, or they should know.
When did you put the lots together?
So we put the lots together prior to constructing on the lots.
Did you have your permitting prior to putting the lots together?
We did, we owned the home on the primary lot, which was 14, we had a home fire. Before we had the fire, we bought lot 13. After the fire, we decided, hey, let's move our in-laws in and we're going to rebuild. And this is what the new building is going to look like. Before we broke ground, did anything, we sent the plans to both HOA. Which again, to, just to speak to that. At, at the time when our home was installed in the property and went through the process, the POA did not exist. It was done directly with the developer who owned it outright. The POA has come on now as a new body. So the actual structure and building that we own was also permitted and allowed specifically by the developer. So the POA didn't have any way in on what we could build, how we could build, and it was approved. Additionally, we built only after we received permit for the pool house, permit for the main house and the pool. And then we started building. And at that time, I'm not a builder, I'm not a developer. I'm just going by what the county told us we could do. And that's what we did, so.
So when, when were the lots combined though?
Um, this was probably, so that's the structure, so the lots were combined in 20, hasn't it been 2020? It was COVID because we were building in COVID. So the lots were, I think, permitted in 2019, if I could pull the permit.
The permit, the permits were separate lots.
No, the permits were one lot. It's two structures, but one lot.
But it was permitted in 19 and put together in 20, correct?
I don't think so, we started building in 20 and we were permitted in 20, built in 20. And building, the construction took two years. So, um, yeah, we received our permit. And if you, on the permits itself, they show 494 pool house and 494 main house. That's how it's permitted. And we also have another permit for 494, just the actual pool itself. So at no point in time is there anything that's saying otherwise and you got the green light. And again, we've had every single inspection throughout this process. We had a foundation inspection, we had a plumbing inspection, we had a footing inspection, we had a framing inspection. We had an electrical roughing inspection. And all of that happened through the county and was certified through the county.
So the initial permit was purchased in?
I believe it's 2020, I can find it now. They were permitted at the same time.
Both permits were May 2020.
Yeah.
And the combination of the lots?
2020.
Don't know that, the exact date.
Building permit issued May 26, 2020. And I have the permit number here.
It, it was combined though, was it replatted?
It was.
No, it's, if, if you look up the property, like on Q public, it still shows the applicable recorded plat is the 1998 subdivision plat. So essentially it's, you know, and that was one of the options presented to the Hawthorne family earlier this year by staff. That it, it would be pretty straightforward to return its status to lot 13 and lot 14. But I mean, I understand, you know, if the Hawthorne family wants to try this too, I mean.
Is the tax, do they get, do you get one tax bill for it or two?
We have one tax bill.
Okay, so it's combined with the, with the tax accessory.
And I, I, I'd be 100% okay with splitting the lots. If the county can impose with the POA not to charge me an additional HOA fee, it's $3,500. So that's a dilemma.
Then this board's.
Otherwise, I would definitely want to move forward with the variance.
So yeah, I mean, it'd be essentially, you, you would take from one to the other. As I understand it, you currently own, the, the family owns two properties, two parcels. One that's vacant, one that has the house and pool house and they touch and.
We own, yeah, three lots, we own 13, 14 and 15.
Right, so it, I mean, it could become 13 is the pool house, 14 is the main house. And then that vacant lot could just be combined with the main house area. So that you'd start out with two properties, one with everything, one vacant. And end with two properties, one with the pool house, one with the main house. If, if you're, if your only objection is not having to pay, you know, three property tax bills or three HOA bills.
Yeah.
It, I mean, it's two now and it could end up being two. But I understand you, you're probably thinking you've got a vacant lot, you may not want to go with those rights.
I might want to sell that lot.
Future development of a vacant lot.
Yeah, that, so that's the issue is, uh, we, we pay HOA fee on the vacant lot anyway. So, you know, having to split it again and pay another fee is kind of.
Thank you, Mr. Hawthorne.
Yeah, okay, thank you guys.
Okay, and yeah, I appreciate your time. I, I'm glad we've got Leah as our zoning staff. She quickly looked up and did confirm what I had not found. That they, the Hawthorne family in January 2020 did have a new survey prepared, had it recorded. And so that you might say overrides the old 1998 subdivision plat. This January 2020 notes lots 13 and 14 are no more, it's just one piece of property.
Yeah, can you show the, the parcel? Okay, this is, this doesn't include though, the pool and the, and the pool house. Okay. So you really could, it looks like you could probably, I don't know where that pool sits, but you could probably use the original lot line.
They had to break it back apart.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that would be an option.
Okay, so we have a decision to make. Either grant or deny variance. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion is a hate setting precedent when we have a guideline that we haven't ever had to go against before. And when you go against those guidelines, you set precedent. And that's the only thing I'm concerned about. I understand that there was mistakes made back in previous, that everything got platted a certain way. And buildings are starting to, are being under construction, but still the guideline is what it is and we're being asked to go against that.
Yeah, and there is, at least there is other solutions.
Yeah, so I, I would say, I, I would vote in denial of the variance.
Is there a motion?
Motion to deny. Because they have other options and that keeps us from going against our code.
I'll second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
I don't have a screen.
Broke it. All in favor, in denial.
Motion to deny is carried 2-1 with one abstention. You have the right to appeal to the board of commissioners. VA 25-17, Howard Linder has filed an application with appropriate authorities seeking relief from the requirements of the Dawson County Land Development Code. Article 3, Section 121, 67, 3C. The applicant requests a 30-foot reduction from the required 35-foot front setback to remain no less than five feet from front property lines for the construction of a front porch extension. Subject property is currently zoned VCR, vacation cottage restricted. Subject property is at 386 Holly Circle. Is someone here to speak for Howard Linder? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on a piece of paper there on the podium. For the record, please state your name.
Howard Linder.
Please give us a reason for the request of your variance.
Designed this house for these folks, but due to the restrictions of building a new house on the property in the Athens Boat Club, some of the lines are way bigger than what was originally built. So we designed it to put, you know, another structure out the back, which is within the setbacks. We want to put a front porch on the front, like several of the other homes around there. And we just needed to some reduction of it because the house is already in the building line. It's been sitting there for 40 some odd years. And we're just wanting to add a front porch on the front of it, which will keep us, you know, off the roadway. All the roadways that are out there have no curb, no gutter, no storm drains. It's a privately owned subdivision that takes care of their own streets. And it's very tight lots and all we're asking so that we can put the front porch on to update the house. And that's what we're asking for.
What is the size of the proposed front porch?
It's 24 foot wide by eight foot deep.
And the house itself already sits in that encroachment line, correct?
Absolutely.
So you're not looking to put a 30-foot deep porch on front because the house already sits?
35 foot is well into the structure as it is right now. Because when it was built, there probably wasn't the restrictions and guidelines that are now in place.
Okay, any questions to the applicant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, second, all in favor? Motion is carried 3-0, Mr. Linder, you have your variance. VA 25-19, James Callis has filed an application with appropriate authorities seeking relief from the requirements of Dawson County Land Development. Article 3, Chapter 121, 67, requesting a reduction of 15 feet from the required 10, 20-foot rear setback. Is someone here to speak for Mr. Callis? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. If you would, please express your need for a variance on this protected property.
Okay, mine's not much different than the one before us. I'm in Athens Boat Club also. The dwelling was built back, I'm going to say probably around 45 years ago. It is an encroachment of the existing codes. When it was built, there was no zoning codes. And I don't know if you're familiar with Athens Boat Club, but they have a different type of structure in there where they leased the lots and everything's crisscrossed and it's, it's nice to see recorded plats being requested now. Because that kind of puts everybody, okay, this is my lot and that's my lot. Instead of somebody bringing out a piece of paper saying, this is what I have and it shows a little drawing. That being said, the people that I'm working with are wanting to add a bathroom. The bathroom does not go past existing dwelling where it is now. But they required me to get a variance on it anyway, to get a permit. And that's the reason I'm here. I've gotten approval from the environmental health and they say everything looks good. It's not asking for any other bedrooms, just a bathroom.
And the size of the bathroom?
It is eight by five.
Thank you, Mr. Callis. Oh, I'm sorry, any questions applicant? Thank you, Mr. Callis.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone here speaking in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here speaking opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Moving to second to approve, all in favor? Motion is carried, Mr. Callis, you have your variance. VA 25-20, Dennis Powell filed an application for, for seeking relief from the requirements of the Land Development Code. Article 2, Chapters 109-23, 109-24, 109-26. As well as Chapters 117, 208 and 117, 210 to allow for an alternate landscaping plan. Is someone here to speak for Mr. Powell?
Yes, sir.
Write your name and address on the podium, have a piece of paper on the podium. After which, please state your name for the record.
Dennis Powell, Powell Property Group. Leah, if you could pull up those first pictures. This, please bear with me because I'm going to explain what we're trying to do along all those out parcels on Dawson Forest. Going to the new roundabout and coming up 53. I've got a history with Dawson County, probably when y'all were in school back in 09, 08, 09. When we did the Moto 400 building. I want to say everything we've ever done has been the highest quality wherever we are. And that's what I want to continue on those out parcels. So this is the Moto 400 building, which is, was across from the Chamber of Commerce building now. But it's now Northeast Georgia Medical Center. So obviously, the motorcycle business got into trouble. But I designed that building to be a 10-tenant retail building and not a motorcycle dealership. And that's what saved us. Northeast Georgia bought it from us as the bank was going down. And they converted it to their medical center and it actually won an award for conversion. Because basically the way we laid it out. So next, then we took that idea and went to Forsyth County, off McFarland, across from Halcyon. As you go into the meadows, which has the horse statues out front, we started taking this concept. And that's the Georgia Water and Fire Restoration Building. Again, we designed that to be an eight-tenant condo building. They've occupied the whole thing, those doors in the front are solid mahogany, modeled after the St. Regis. And then the next one, Leah, that's the next Georgia Water and Fire Building. That's a, a two-tenant building, but they're occupying the whole thing again. We just emphasized top quality. This is the last project we just got done in Forsyth County. Off of McFarland going west to Highway 9. It's actually behind a O'Reilly's Auto Parts and a German Auto Repair. But in the last five years, it's been the most successful office project in North Atlanta, 82,000 square feet. All of these are owned by small businessmen. Those started off at about $150 a foot and we ended up at 350, 11 buildings later at $350 a foot. So the quality's always been there. We always overpark our buildings. And we, we don't use shingles. These are true commercial construction, they're clear span, which is expensive. We do 10-foot ceilings. Inside our hallways are even six inches wider, allowing people to walk side by side. True TPO, commercial roofing, HVAC units on the roof. I mean, everything is very high quality. So we want to take this concept on to and create, we, I've always serviced the owner occupiers. So this first building, as you go down Dawson Forest between the Publix and the Walmart, it'll be your first building on the left. The next lot, we just sold for 900,000. So we're implementing some very strict architectural use controls. There's going to be an overall POA with a reserve for parking lot replacement, interparcel connectivity. And I think we're actually the first part of the Dawson County Greenway. So we're going to continue that sidewalk going up to the roundabout, which we contributed to the, I think it was 200, $250,000 to that roundabout construction and then turn and come up 53. So that's the plan. And as you can see. and come up 53. So that's the plan, and as you can see, one thing you will notice, there's not a whole lot of trees in front of our buildings, because all the local authorities, even Moto 400, they said, these buildings are great. You don't need to hide them. So here we come into tree density calculations. That was started in the early 70s by a company called Post Properties. They would build pretty inexpensive residential construction for apartments, but hide them with over-planting plants. I have a unique experience in that, starting in, well, I started with one lawnmower, but through the 80s and the 90s, we grew into one of the largest commercial landscape design companies in Atlanta. I also had a five-acre nursery at Jones Bridge and State Bridge Road in what is now Johns Creek, so I know plant material. So specifically, and you can read more, I've given you a layout of our highlights of what we're doing now. We have already sold out the first building, and I've asked for this variance to bring in a new concept in landscaping. It's not going by tree density calculation, because as the calculation is now, we would have to plant 78 trees on that lot. And there's, it's tiered in the back. There's a hillside in the back, there's a hillside in the front, and you live up in the mountains, you know what happens to trees planted on hillsides. So what I'd like to, and you guys actually gave me a variance, a setback variance on that back building, so I could create a median going down to the middle of the parking lot to break the parking lot up, so it doesn't like a huge expanse, and we're putting southern pin oaks in there to give some shade and some scale. But what I want to do with the landscaping, and I've always wanted to do this, I want to introduce, and yeah, I am from the hippie era, but I do want to introduce what I'm calling is fruits and fragrance and flowering plant material. And I've asked for the variance to delay it, because if I had to do it while we're getting our CO, I was buying plant material harvested last year. So they'll be starting to plant again, I mean, digging the new material right after the second frost. So getting back to this fruits and fragrance, I want to introduce blueberries, raspberries, blackberries, fruit-bearing trees, like cherries that flower, and plum trees. And then, as far as the fragrance grows, there's gardenias I want to introduce, evergreen gardenias, that they have a new variety that blossom all year round and put off fragrance all year round, and then another plant called tea olive, which has a real intense burst, and then lilacs. There's a southern lilac strain that withstands the heat and humidity of the South, and they are very fragrant for probably ten days in the spring. So my, what I'd like to do, and as far as the flowering part, too, there's a tree called a Cusa dogwood. It's a dogwood that doesn't grow more than ten, maybe twelve feet tall, and I've planted them up in our farm where we live twenty years ago. The other thing that I, on my plant selection, is none of these need irrigation after the initial year. So they're gonna be hardy. The problem with the post-property type design is they plant them too close together, and they start crashing in on each other, and you can look at an example at the Australian Outback Steakhouse, right out front, they've got three oaks, you can almost reach out and touch each one, just to fulfill the tree density calculation. I don't care if it dies. So I'm asking for this relief to try this, well, it's not gonna be a new, because I've been doing this for 20 years. Again, all these plants I've planted up on our farm, up in White County. So, and here's the, here's the thing that I'd like everybody to think about for the future of Dawson County, because everything I've ever done, I'm getting old, and I want to leave memories of good stuff, high-quality materials. But if you've got people, if you've got these tree density calculations that anybody that's in the business will tell you, it's crazy. I was in the business. I love selling the plants, but you're hiding the architecture. So our architect is Tracy Ward, who has won numerous awards, and is also the head of the Design Review Board in Milton and Alpharetta. If you allow us to put the money into the building, the backs of our buildings are bricked. Who does that against the hillside? Nobody sees. We do. If you allow us to do high-quality, take the lead from all these other counties that are just throwing out tree density, and then you have the landscape architects just punching in on a computer what to put in there to meet that tree density calculation, it's, nobody has an inducement to build something nice and high-quality. If Dawson County could think about this and, and start making allowances for guys that are doing all brick and interesting brickwork, and more glass, and more, more commercial construction, I think you could take the lead in the whole metro Atlanta. And there, you know, I've done hundreds of these. I'm not a computer guy. I always hand-design. I go out there and I count where every plant's going. So we planted some right now, right in front. I put rubus, which is a new strain of raspberry, for a ground cover that spreads. And once you water it in, you don't have to water it anymore. All these plants, once established, you don't need irrigation. So I'm just here, it's common sense, but I want them to look beautiful, but not take away from the architecture, more to accent it than to cram it in. So, sorry if I took too much time, but I get fired up about this, and it's, I'd sure like to pursue it further with the county. And I've always had a good experience with Dawson County. Y'all even gave me that variance, so I can do that boulevard going down the middle between the two buildings. So I guess, oh, that next building is going in, I'm gonna have patios on the back overlooking the Greenway. So, and they're not dinky patios either, they're gonna be twelve-by-twelves. So I just, our backs of our buildings, especially that one's gotta look as good as the front. So if you have any questions of me, I'm sorry, I get a little fired up, but this is something I really feel, I really want to contribute. And that's, if you look at our company, Powell Property Group, we just got voted best of Forsyth County everywhere we go. We, we've been one of the two companies asked to represent Hall County on their business. We worked for seven banks during the downturn. I mean, we have, I'm very proud. We're just dinky, but we have real hot rods in our company. So any questions for me, or?
Any questions, applicant?
Have you thought about approaching the county and working with them and determining if they want to use you as a test case to determine if this is something that might be viable for the county, and just out of curiosity, because we're going against zoning requirements?
I understand that totally, yes. And here's the thing, Forsyth County asked me to be on a small board to expedite commercial development down there, and we met for three years, but politics got in the way, and they disbanded it. Well, they just called us back, and there won't be any commissioners there for this one. So I'm getting, what I'm getting at is, I've got other ideas that I don't really, I would like to meet you guys and tell you what I'm thinking about, a pretty broad plan that could be really dynamic for Dawson County, and it's including this Greenway. So with that being said, I understand what you're saying, and I've met with the development authority. They know what I'm, I've talked to Richard and Leah about it, and I've just got some ideas I think would be tax stimulants for the county. Because what happened to Forsyth County, residential tax base got unbalanced, there wasn't enough commercial. They were so restrictive. So now they're having to rethink a lot of those restrictions they put in. But I'm over there hammering, we can put less restrictions, but we still have to have the quality. So anyways, I'll keep going if you let me.
So from our standpoint, when we're looking at density calculations, which is what we normally look at, and you're asking for leeway with different types of plants, are you also suggesting a density calculation for your fruit, fragrance, flower of any type?
Well, the tree density calculation is based on tree caliber.
Right.
And blueberry is more like a shrub tree.
So where you've said 78 trees per lot is?
That was just the hardwoods. That wasn't even, that wasn't even the understory.
So numbers of plants, we'll say, for this, how many are you willing to put in per lot, so to speak?
It will, well, I was started with that landscape design. It's going, my ultimate goal is I use a lot of ground covers because I want to get away from pine straw. And that's what we would do on our properties, that we were landscaping. We did a bunch of apartments and condos back in the day. So what you do is you start lyrium, that rubus we're trying right now, vinca minor, you start planting these, and in the winter, your landscape crews go and transplant these, and then within four to five years, you don't have pine straw caused. I'm sure you all get sick of putting out pine straw. So that's just another idea. I mean, I, directly answered a question, I don't know the count, but I will tell you this.
Are you willing to stick to that?
Of the hillside going along Club Forest going in, I didn't do the hold it on. This was just for the first building. And I would like to have the leeway to see if I, like, look at the fruit plum. If I find a better variety of apple, I'd like to put that in. I don't like to be stuck with exactly, like, the forsythia, those yellow bells that bloom in the spring, you could actually take their branches and put a brick on them, and they'll grow. The spirea, they look, they usually grow pretty long. The onkord hybrid, those are a new strain of the last 15 years. You've seen them in Home Depot. They bloom twice in the spring and the fall. So, and the other thing, you know, my landscape is not happy because I went out there myself and looked at the holes they planted. I said, man, you're not gonna do these dinky holes. I made them go back and replant all the plants. The gardenias they planted are too close to the building. They're gonna grow up into the windows. And that building, if you look at it, I think we got a picture of it somewhere, Leah, of the new building. There it is. Yeah, and I really would like you guys to go on a tour of the inside, because they're spectacular. And I don't know if I'm repeating myself, but we just signed a contract for one of the suites in the next building, over $400 a foot. That's breaking records everywhere. So we're not, we're not out here to be cheap. These people are spending big money on these condos, and, and I'd like, and they're proud of the way it looks. So that's what I'm asking for. I know it's kind of nebulous and not to the point.
So you're willing to be held to what you've submitted, at least?
Oh, yeah, at least that. Oh, yeah.
Question for the county. All right, so he's proposing to do this instead of tree recompense, but he still need, he still would have to pay into the tree recompense, correct?
So this is not an all or nothing. In other words, if Mr. Powell was coming before the planning commission and saying, the county has landscaping requirements, we want to do away with them. We don't want to do anything. We want to just have pavement and sidewalk and gutter and building, and that's it. This is something that I've worked with folks on, not often, but maybe once every two or three years, where, let's say, a gas station is based in Arizona, and they just, their model is Xeriscave with, you know, trees that you would see in California, Arizona, and lots of rocks and cactus and stuff. And so they just come in and say, hey, you know, this is our broad brush stroke model. You know, this is, you know, Palm, Arizona, car wash, and this is how it's gonna look. And so it's a big-picture approach. So it's similar to this here. This is proposing landscaping just of a different mindset. And so it's something that definitely can be applied for as a variance. It's a little harder to just say, I mean, you can, if you want to say, for example, you could say approved, you could say denied, you could say approved with condition based on this exact concept site plan or the exact number of trees. I know that's, that's not his approach, but, you know, you could, you could make different motions, but whatever you do, I mean, this is a legitimate and it's doable, you know, variance. So you're not going against the code.
That's what I want to make sure. We're not setting precedent and causing hardship.
Could I add one thing? I want this thing to be the precedent for what goes in the success of lots, because we're gonna have control of the architecture, the landscaping, the use. We're not gonna have floppy air men out front, no tattoo parlors. The corner, we're right now trying to talk to a high-quality hotel or a medical office building. Every one of these are gonna be highly controlled, and with, like I said, interconnectivity, keep the stress off the main street. We have, one of our brokers is, dominates downtown Alpharetta and Milton, and she's got great restaurant connections. We're trying to get in chef-driven restaurants here. So again, I'm trying to set up a high-quality precedent that says, here, this is a minimum we're gonna do from all these nine out parcels.
The thing, the thing that, a question for you, is one of the concerns. I've seen some issues where landscaping is left up to the owner or the developer, and then the developer doesn't maintain. And then you've got a piece of property where stuff is dying, and nobody's cutting grass, nobody's paying attention to it, okay? Are these any, are these annuals, or are they stuff that has to be constantly maintained, or you have to replant every year, or what? What are you looking at?
That's exactly like I'd like to get to. No, these things are self-sustaining, don't need water. Like I said, the ground covers, they spread. The plants, they just, they take zero maintenance. I'm pretty lazy when it comes down to it, landscaping, but I don't want to plant high-maintenance plants that need constant pruning and trees dropping everywhere. No, no. We'll have annuals planted here and there that you do have to replant, but all of these are perennial.
Would there be something you might be open to working with the county on a maintenance agreement?
I would love to. I would love to also work with the county and kind of develop some kind of.
What I'm concerned about is the fact that we, we approve this, and then you're, and it goes forward, and you end up planting these things, and then there's no oversight to make sure the stuff's maintained.
Oh, okay. That's what the, there's gonna be, like I said, there's a POA for all outside lots that right now we control, and then this specific lot, we have a condo association within it with a board and a professionally managed association. It's not gonna be jack lagging it. So, I mean, I want this to be the highest quality, instead of driving up and down 400 and seeing different architecture, different things. I want a cohesive, I want to make it a magnet for the county and an example. And I would like, and I do want to get with, my other point, I would like to get with you and the commissioners and talk about creating a standard where if you do this type of architecture, use this much brick, this much glass, we'll give you some relief on the tree density calculation. It has gotten out of control. You can ask anybody. It's just not to save money. It's just down the road, it becomes just like what you're talking about, John, a maintenance mess. And that's what was happening with Post Properties, their property. All their trees were dying and knocking over, but they had sold the apartments. They didn't care. And these are owner-occupiers. So they, they're, they're gonna stay.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, at this time, we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen?
I think it's great. I like the creativity.
I do, too, and I just want to, the only thing would be that some type of working with the county with a maintenance agreement so that it's maintained, and it's not, you know, somebody else buys a property later and then it just goes.
Well, that could happen with trees, though.
Yeah.
Same thing, I mean. Is there, there is a, is there a one-year, what is the, on the trees, is there any maintenance requirement, if it was just a normal plant with trees?
If you want to have a requirement where without a doubt, there's a one-year, two-year landscape bond or letter of credit prior to issuance of certificate completion of the buildings, something like that.
What's normally required with just the normal requirements, the trees?
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't, I don't think it's always that, you know, if a new Home Depot went in, that there would have to be, you know, a one-year, two-year, something landscape, you know, assurance, surety bond, you know, bond or letter of credit. I don't know that that's required. Politt Works enforces 133, the development regulations, so I can't speak to all the bonds, you know, on the front end and the back end. I don't know that answer.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve with the condition of a two-year bond worked out with the county. I know I can't, I can keep something alive for a year, but usually after that, it dies. But with the county, a motion to approve. But with the county, a motion to approve with that, with that stipulation.
Second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
What did I not do? Broke it?
The, the motion is carried. You have your, motion is carried, Mr. Powell. You have your variance.
Can I get my pictures back? I want a frame on under my office.
Application for rezoning, ZA 2507, Ben Trail with Trail and Sons has submitted request to appropriate authorities to rezone 1.697 surveyed acres from CHB to RSR. Is someone here to speak for Mr. Trail? Please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium.
I'm Ben Trail. A little history on this property. When my client asked to have this thing rezoned, he asked the sole commissioner, Jolene Cox, for a commercial zoning for his boat storage and a residential zoning for where his house was going. And Mr. Cox just zoned it, everything, CHB. We're trying to catch up now. He's sold the house, and we're just trying to follow up and make sure the zoning is correct for the new buyer. That's all I got.
Any questions, applicant? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none. At this time, we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval. Second.
Moving to second, recommend approval. All in favor? Motion is carried. Mr. Trail, we are recommending approval. You'll need to appear before the Board of Commissioners next month.
Thank you.
ZA 2508, Sean Courtney has submitted request on the appropriate authorities on behalf of Dawson Forest owner, LLC, Matthew Oppenheimer, to amend zoning conditions 2, 5, 6, and 9 as adopted in cases ZA 2401. Subject property is parcel number 114031, located east of Dawson 400 behind the Public Shopping Center, zoned CPCD. Someone here to speak for Sean Courtney?
Yes.
If you would, write your name and address. Also, for the record, please state your name.
My name is Steve West. I'm with Halpern Enterprises. Matthew Oppenheimer is also with me, also with Halpern. Unfortunately, Sean couldn't make it tonight, but in deference to your time, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. This was a request that we brought about a year ago, maybe a little over a year ago. This board approved what we were asking for, which was to switch a access point from the original zoning of the Dawson Crossroad Shopping Center area. This was the back parcel, and it was to switch it from access to Worldwide Drive to access through the shopping center. This board approved of that request. We went on to, to the commission. They, during that time, there were some concerns raised through the staff about the connection point between our residential site and our commercial site. And so, some conditions were placed on the zoning at that time to require that access point to the commercial site to be emergency vehicles only. At that time, we thought that was gonna be acceptable, that we were gonna get an access through the apartment complex next door. Unfortunately, they were only willing to grant access if we also had access through the shopping center, that we would have two ways. They didn't want to be the exclusive driveway for the, for the residential that we're doing. One other thing I'll just add, and if you don't remember from last time, this was originally zoned with an 84 units of apartments. We've switched that to townhomes with about half that density going forward. So, this is a, you know, pretty low-level density. It's 37, I think, units is what we're expecting there. The site is very mountainous almost, more than hilly. So, challenging site to develop. And, and the pathway through the shopping center, let me close out by saying, we, discovering that the staff had concerns about the access point, we've now met with the Public Works Department and addressed some changes to the plan that, that dealt with the issues that they were concerned about. And at this point, they don't have any issues that they've raised to us about the connection there. So, so we're asking to sort of delete the things that were added to the zoning at the last commission meeting last year.
Would this be proposed as a main entrance or a secondary entrance?
I think, I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. It, it'll be one of two entrances, is what we think. The apartment complex next door just will not grant the easement if, if that is their only way in. So, this is our only way that we have legal access to the site, is through our own property.
Original owner, wasn't it the same of both properties?
Yes.
Right thought. Okay. And you realize behind the shopping center is a major hole, correct?
I've walked it, yes, sir. There's a creek running, you know, through there, yes.
Yes.
And, and when we were here a year ago, there was a builder wanting to build on it at the time, and so, we were kind of following their lead in terms of what they wanted us to get approved. And when, when the access didn't work out with the apartments, then here we are. So.
Any questions, applicant?
So, I just want to get it right. You will have two accesses. Would the apartment give you access if you have this access?
They say they will, yes. We don't have an easement yet, but they say that they will. Now, it's a small area, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily need two, two ways in and out, but we feel like entrance through theirs would, would be a more attractive way through.
Yeah, what we approved, I think, last year was only this entrance. It wasn't gonna have another one. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. We didn't, we didn't want to condition it on something we didn't control, which was them. And that's, but when we got to county commission, that's where we ended up. But I, let me just finish by saying, at the time, the staff was concerned about that connection point between the shopping center and the residential. We have, we have met with them on several occasions, submitted back-and-forth drawings of things to do. And, and at this point, we believe that they're fully satisfied with that connection point as being an actual one, not just an emergency one.
So, you're putting in some type of traffic calming measures?
Yes, several stop signs and bars and a, and a speed table. And, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. West.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward. Write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. For the record, please state your name.
My name is Lucy Martinez. Good evening. I am just here to respectfully oppose the zoning request for those 37 townhomes. Proposed on those, like, I think it's like approximately eight acres of greenfield behind the Publix right there. So, like he was saying, it's pretty undeveloped. It's been untouched. There's a creek going down at the bottom. I'm kind of here more so to raise environmental concerns and also in, like, burdens on pre-existing vehicular infrastructure, considering this area has already been developed super, super quickly. And like the past few years, Dawsonville has seen such an increase in development in impervious surfaces. So, that's increased our sedimentation, our erosion runoff. So, that kind of also goes into our water sources. So, it's kind of a lot of environmental things that are connected from this, like, quick development. These greenfields are also really, really, really important for, for natural filtration of pollution from runoff, and also soil and erosion control, because they are mature, established roots. They also house lots of small species that are, like, I guess, from a monetary standpoint, really not that important. But from an environmental intrinsic standpoint, they are pollinators. They help with all of our natural processes. And a lot of times, when the greenfields are developed, it leads to the extinction of many of those tiny species, and birds, and rodents, and everything. And we already see a lot of wildlife, kind of fatalities on the sides of the roads as they're being displaced from their natural homes. These are one of the last undeveloped areas in Dawsonville as it's growing so quickly, or like greenfields at least specifically. So, it is kind of imperative that, like, we try to leave some of them, especially in an area where there's, it goes down. There is a creek, so you know that drainage has to happen. You know that it's going to happen. And that greenfield is, like, necessary for that to happen. Along with that, there, if we take away that greenfield, the environmental impacts that come from that, we have higher levels of water and air pollution. There's a phenomena, phenomena called the urban heat island phenomena, which is where areas become covered in impervious surfaces, such as like cement, pavement, that kind of thing, necessary for commercial and residential buildings. And it increases the heat in certain areas in cities. And so, with Dawsonville, you, there's, I did a study at UNG where Dawsonville has increased over the past, like, 10 years significantly by, like, a few degrees, like, more than it should have. And creation of more things like this, where the greenfields will not be able to absorb the heat and filter the water naturally and provide a space for these species would be kind of why I'm opposing this. And I just wanted to consider the long-term environmental and community impacts before approving this rezoning, because once this greenfield is gone, it is gonna be gone forever. And along with that, like, on top of the environmental concerns, like, really, the infrastructure concerns, we are already kind of pushing the limits of Dawsonville's vehicular infrastructure. There, everything is being developed at a faster rate than that this town can, like, really handle. So, it's, I don't know. That, I think that was it. Sorry, I got nervous at the end. But yes, that would be all. Am I good?
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Of course.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none. At this time, we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen?
Just to note that this, this already is rezoned for the townhouses. It's just modified a few conditions on it, so.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve. All in favor? Motion is carried. This is a recommendation that comes before the Board of Commissioners. You will also hear, need to be before the Board of Commissioners next month.
Sir, thank you.
Is there any updates from staff at this time?
No, sir.
That leaves us with the letter M, which is adjournment. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
At this time, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.